All right, I'm with James Irvin, candidate for single-member District Six City Council. Nice to meet you, James. So let's just start with, who is James Irvin?
Nice to meet you, ma'am. Well, basically, I'm originally from Indiana. I've served almost fifteen years.
A little bit louder, I want to make sure we catch that.
No worries. I'm a very soft-spoken person.
I can tell.
So I like to sometimes compare myself with the old Teddy Roosevelt thing of, "Speak softly and carry a big stick," philosophy.
But we want them to hear, so.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't always reach, which I've worked on that myself as well.
That's good, right there. That's a good level.
And, well, originally from Indiana, like I said, and I've served about just under fifteen years of service. I'm a disabled veteran, and I like to try to pull my experience from what I've learned from those types of things that can really kind of benefit some of the special aspects that are in San Angelo. And some people are aware of those, some people may not be aware of, like the specifics of the university. There's an international aspect. There's the special working relationship with the base in a lot of parts of the city that they're not aware of, especially with the fire department, Shannon, the police department in some ways, things like that. A lot of other stuff, which, you know, is mundane, but we don't need to go into right now.
So what motivated you to choose to run for City Council?
Well, I'm sure like a lot of people, they're, excuse me, like a lot of people, they're probably tired of seeing the same things over and over again that don't get resolved. You consistently see the same apathy or lack of work being completed with the road system. And again, we see the water system breaking down, which then culminated in the huge issue with Paul Ann having their water being contaminated. And even at this point, we're still not getting that resolved and finding the source of what's wrong with that. Not even the simple answers of, why wasn't it being basically maintained, which is a pretty straightforward answer. Why wasn't it being maintained? And how did it get contaminated? But no one's answered. And those are things, of course, that, you know, people in office now should be able to answer, or city managers, you know, which is accountability, and, you know, and that's something I'm for, is accountability, whoever it is, whether it's a company, city manager, council, whoever.
So what do you bring to the table that will improve our City Council?
Like I said, the, those things of accountability, they don't seem to want to find out what's going on. There's no transparency. They claim to be transparent. We don't see it. They're definitely not accountable, as I said. You don't see them holding the city manager accountable. And those are things that I've learned in my short term of being alive, if you want to say that, is that people need to be held accountable. And it's a simple thing. You don't need to be apathetic. And it's not complicated. It's really not. And obviously, the same thing with taxes. If you're going to try to raise taxes, you need to show something for it, which we're not seeing that either, you know, or at least explain what's, explain what's going on. There's a give and take to it. You need to give us something for those taxes. You know, it's, it's simple. It's, it's not rocket science.
Have you been following City Council for a while? And if so, what changes do you feel need to be made?
I haven't been following it as close as I've, as close as, well, I'm following it more closely since I've been running for council, I should say. Like most people, until you take a real interest in it, then you really keep an eye on it. I definitely feel more that there's too much, everybody agrees on everything. There's no discussion, there's no dispute what's going on. Everybody's just, sure, let's do this and this. There's no understanding of what they're voting for. So how can you agree to do something if you don't know what it's about? There's no discussion. They may look like they're discussing it. Or there may be something going on behind the scenes, which I don't agree with either, you know? Again, back to transparency. So we definitely need to bring it more forward. They need to be more vocal. And it's, I don't agree with that either, you know? I don't know if that helps, or if you need me to rephrase.
No, that's all right. I'm going to ask you some questions. I'm going to name some bullet points, let's say, and to find out what your perspective is on some different topics. So the first one is our infrastructure, the water lines collapsing. What's your perspective on that?
Again, it goes back to the simple accountability. And it's, it's, I've never, well, other than everybody hearing about Flint, Michigan, and the same with their problem, it should be straightforward. People need to be able to maintain it. It's not hard. You have people that, that's their job to keep working on it and watching it. And if there's people in the water department that are watching it, and they're telling the council, but the council's not listening, it's, I mean, it's, it's simple, straightforward. And if it's that big of a problem, then they need to be using that money appropriately. It's, like I said, it's not hard. I mean, they may say it's hard, or, I mean, but again, it's just appropriation of the right stuff at the right time. And if, if, if the stuff's too old, you know, you need to portion it out as appropriate. Do the surveys like you're supposed to, and so on. It's, it's not.
What about our city streets?
Exact same issue. And there's one thing that I've learned that apparently made a difference, from what I've, I've been told by older folks who've been here longer. They've seen the roads were in better condition, that there used to be a roads department, that they were able to maintain the roads better, better schedule. And I, I would like to see that returned. Of course, if, if I can be in the office, I would love to return that element. And I understand that the only reason that that office was returned, excuse me, dismantled, was because people complained about the pensions. It's like, well, when you have people that did good work, and they stayed a long time, it happens. You know, it, it's just what happens. But when you got good quality stuff out of things, it, it's, it's just an occurrence.
What about our rising crime and the murder rate that's accelerating?
Yes, and I have spoken with the police chief on that as well. And from what I understand, it's another problem with money not being put in the right spot. They're not getting the people they need. They're not getting the money they need. Another big issue, they don't have the right equipment they need. And we also have a department building that's over, let's see, built back in the 50s. They have all sorts of other issues. It's, it's a necessity they need. So if you don't have enough people, you don't have the right equipment, they can't be everywhere where they need to be. And it's obviously something that I would love to help with. And there's, I'm sure there's outside sources that can help us. And if, if the current council isn't asking them about it, or if they're too lazy to ask those questions, well, shame on them too, you know? So obviously, if they're too blind to see it, well, again, double shame, because they're obviously not asking anybody. They can't see it. And they know better.
All right, what about the statewide pandemic mandates and the, and the local orders from the health department that we've had?
If Governor, I feel that if Governor Abbott, if I was in office, or if I was elected into the council, and if Governor Abbott had not rescinded it, I would have pushed for it to have been rescinded early, or by this time, or once I was in council, I would have pushed for it. Because I feel that the, well, we see the effect now, how damaging it has been. Because it is ultimately a personal responsibility, and there'll be people that disagree wholeheartedly. Unless they're right, they can disagree. That's fine. But we've seen the damage that it's done in many different ways to the businesses here and in many states, regardless. But you see, there's plenty of places where it has done no damage. And, and you can say it's the science, or the social effect, in whichever direction. But, and again, it goes back to a personal responsibility, the person's right to choose. The only restriction that I would have even considered is potentially asking those who might have been at risk to safeguard themselves, and things of that nature. I wouldn't have done what the council asked, and originally when it happened, and tried to enforce a large fine on people who refused to wear a mask. That was one of the most outrageous things I've seen, and was in violation of Governor, excuse me, Governor Abbott's order in the first place, which meant they clearly did not read his, his order in the first place. And it was just a grab for money. And I, again, it just shows how, I don't want to speak negative directly about them, but they, they couldn't comprehend what the order was. Like, no one read it. And obviously, the, I would, I want to say even the attorney's office didn't comprehend it either, because it's a straightforward legal document, and it said you couldn't exceed the authority of the governor's office, which the order did specifically by saying, "We'll fine you," I believe it was like $250 on your second offense, which is ridiculous. So enough about that.
All right, what about dog parks and bike trails?
Honestly, I don't have an issue with, I don't know if, if there's a concern with them, or honestly, I'm not sure what.
Just, you know, your perspective for our community on dog parks, bike trails?
If they're, I mean, if there's, if people really want them and people are using them, then fine. If, if that's, if there's a demand for them, then yes. If people are abusing them and trashing them, I mean, I'd say that's a problem. Then, and if people are being seen violating certain health codes, or things like that, which there's obviously other problems with those things as well, as we see people dumping trash all over the place. And of course, police can't enforce those things everywhere, because obviously, they have, they have issues enforcing shootings and things like that. So of course, we've got to prioritize those issues. But if people want those things, they need to maintain them. You've got to clean up your dog's poo. You gotta, you have to not vandalize stuff. I mean, if you see people doing it, I mean, you gotta, I don't want to say hassle them, but like, hey, this is for all of us. You know, people shouldn't be apathetic, complacent, but you need to, you know, govern each other, but not be a jerk. So.
What about downtown beautification?
If anything helps the city, especially businesses and everything else, again, that kind of goes to everybody working together. Because, I mean, I don't want to cut, I don't want to say a lot of, if it's tax money, it would have to be used appropriately, you know, businesses working together, city working together. And if there's donations or outside funds that help with it, then great. But I don't want to say the city needs to pay for everything, because again, it needs to be used wisely, because it is everybody's money. Because you've got to think about the schools. You have to think about the police department, fire department, the necessities first. But we do want to make sure the city doesn't look like Detroit, or, you know, the horrible places that we imagine. We don't want, we also don't want it to turn into Los Angeles, where people are fleeing in droves, things like that. So.
What about loss of sales tax and what they call the hot tax, hotel occupancy tax? The loss of that revenue due to the pandemic shutdowns?
Well, with, obviously, it's a huge problem with the loss of it. But with the restrictions being loosened by Governor Abbott, and even if he hadn't with, if we get people into office that are more friendly to it, we could, or well, we would have, hopefully, loosen those restrictions, and of course, more people could come back, especially if, you know, with the rodeo and all those other events that could or would come, then those would come back up. And I've already talked with the Chamber of Commerce about trying to work on other ideas. Of course, that would only depend if, those ideas I worked with them would depend on if I could continue working with them in the future. But of course, they're just ideas. But obviously, any loss of revenue in any area is obviously a bad thing. So I, not much else to say on that.
All right, I'm going to move into a different section. Would you be interested in seeing San Angelo become a sanctuary city for unborn children?
As a very sensitive topic, as a person, as a sensitive topic in general, I'm not sure how to answer as a, for everybody, as a personal. I would say sanctuary cities are kind of, depends on, ah, gosh, I'm sorry. As a personal.
That's a different kind of question, so.
Yeah, and, as a personal feeling on unborn, I feel that a person still has, I'm not, ah, gosh, I'm sorry, I'm kind of, I have a difficult answer to the question. I feel that the government doesn't have a, it's not the government's right to have a say on a person's, what the person does with themselves or not, especially the federal government, state, local, or any of those things. And I feel an aspect of sanctuary cities in a lot of ways as well, especially, I don't want to say the government should say on sanctuaries either. If there was, I don't think, I would have, if there was such a vote put forth, I would, I would personally say I would abstain, because I do agree with everybody's right on which they choose, and I don't go against it on religious reasons. And I'm not for it on, I, I believe that they have, a person has a choice to a point. I don't, I definitely don't agree with people who go such to the point of, to the third trimester and all of that stuff. I feel that is ridiculous. I feel that they have a choice up to a point, and I feel that there's all certain circumstances where they definitely have a choice, especially in the cases of assaults and things of that nature. But I definitely don't feel that a government body should have a say, period. I know there'll be people that'll be angry in one direction or the other, but I won't, I, I won't apologize for it.
Okay. What would you be interested in seeing San Angelo become a sanctuary city for illegal aliens?
No.
Well, you knew that one!
Yes, I will, I will, and I won't apologize for that either. Because I do feel with the unborn, it's a very, because, I'll be honest, because I was raised Catholic, and it makes it kind of difficult to say. And then with growing up, it was more of a, learning a lot of stuff, and then understanding more of how things are. It just, it's a very complex thing. But understanding immigration with illegals, it's a lot more clear-cut. It's, I feel that it's very straightforward, especially with the situation now. I feel that it's very outright that it's, it's a big no, especially in regards to not holding them to the same standards as migrant or legal aliens who do everything properly. They abide by the laws, which my wife is even a legal citizen through immigration. And we did everything legal, and she feels the same way. It's, it, it takes away from the hard work that legal migrant citizens have, or immigrant citizens have put in. And it.
All right. Would you be interested in seeing San Angelo become a sanctuary city for the Second Amendment?
I would, and I've discussed that with certain people. It would just have to be a clarification on what that would be, especially in regards to House Resolution 127 and things of that nature, especially if they're trying to remove, well, they're being very ridiculous in regards to a lot of their stuff. They're, with the taxes that they're trying to impose, the restrictions they're trying to impose, they're basically trying to say, "You need a flintlock musket," or something of that sort, "otherwise you can't have a firearm." You might as well just say, "You can only have a baseball bat," which eventually they'll try to say, "You can't even have that because," or a knife, or, you know, a fork in a butter knife, or. That's, you know, it's, it's very frustrating.
All right, let's go to this question. What do you consider the main priorities that need to be addressed by the City Council?
I believe those are pretty clear. The first, the first few, the, the basic infrastructure with the roads and the water. I think right now, they're trying to push those through, because we've seen it. And the capital improvement plan, there appears that they're trying to really push to get a lot of roadwork done, to appear that that's what, that they're really trying to do something. But it looks like they're kind of trying to waste a lot of money on it, though, and that's a problem. And that's just awful, because it's just, it's going to be a facade. But of course, if it ever gets done, maybe, who knows? And naturally, the answers to the contamination, there's still nothing on that. That needs to be answered soon. I don't know if there needs to be a lawsuit. I don't know if we need contact the EPA, because I believe they should have been involved, considering the amount of contamination. We've never heard anything from them. There's, there's, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, but outright, clear the roads, and those need to be done quickly, but properly, and the right funding not wasted. Pipes need to be rechecked all over, and properly apportioned money, not excessive. Which I believe in conjunction with that, the city manager needs to be replaced, because he's the one that approves those contracts. And he, he clearly is wasting the money and time on those, which we've seen plenty of examples. So, and if the council's not holding him accountable, means he's not holding people under him accountable. I'm not saying everybody in, in the city needs to be replaced, just people need to kind of get back in line, you know, start doing what they should. And hopefully, they're not mad about that, but, you know, there's expectation. So.
Do you believe there's a way to trim back on the city budget and live within a modest budget without increasing taxes?
There always is. I mean, but we got to look at what the city manager's been doing with the money. I mean, we got to get in there first to see what's been going on. And we have to be careful about what taxes can be reduced. So the question is, what have they been doing? How have they been doing it? And do you want, because you don't want to cut it down too much or too fast, because you might want to keep it at a certain level first, because you might want to keep it there to get more bang for your buck, as people say. Because if we're able to keep it at a certain level, but you get great service, and of course, we have to prove it to the people. So, and that's going to be hard, because when you expect, when you've seen so much negative work for so long, you know, you, you really got to bust your butt to show it. So first, you got to really get rid of the dead wood, check the books, and then we'll have to see what we can do. And naturally, I, I don't make promises. The only thing I can really promise is I would do my best. I'll hold people accountable as best as I can, just as I expect to be held accountable. And that's all I can do, you know? And again, I'm not a politician. I've never been a politician. I don't want to be a politician. I'm a civil servant. I would be a civil servant, because I'd be working for the people, you know? So.
Okay. Do, do you support freedom of speech, religion, gun rights, our constitution as it was written?
Yes, and this, it's pretty straightforward, I believe. There may only be, there, there may be some understandings you'd have to look at, because they can't account for technology. Like, Facebook needs to have an understanding. Techno, those people need to have an understanding of certain things. But otherwise, it's, it's pretty straightforward. You don't, you don't restrict the Second Amendment. There's not a whole lot you can, but that's also not on us. It's not on the city to determine. It's not. That, that's for the Supreme Court, despite what they're doing now. But that's only for the Supreme Court to decide on the restrictions. So otherwise, it, it should be pretty straightforward. But the only true caveat is, as long as it does not infringe upon someone else's right. So you can't punch someone else in the mouth because of what they're saying. People try, but, and you can't shoot someone just because they got a gun, unless they're committing a crime, because then they're infringing on your right to property. But again, that goes in those caveats. If, but straightforward, they're pretty clear.
Okay. Do you prefer the type of leadership Trump gave us, or what Biden is giving us now?
Clearly Trump, especially because he was a legitimate president. And I'm not, like I said, I'm going to be straightforward and honest. Biden is, is an illegitimate president. He was not voted into office. There's going to be people that disagree with me. They're going to, someone will probably even try to say this is a fact-checking, if it gets posted, but I'm, I'm going to say it. He is illegitimate. He was not elected. He, the court did not decide on it as they were supposed to. He is entirely legitimate. I consider anything he says or does illegal. And what he's doing now is basically destroying the country. And I don't even consider him a president. The only, the only title I would give him is former vice president. And I don't even like saying his name. So, and like I said, people will be upset about it. But like I said, I tell the truth. I call it how I see it.
All right. How can San Angelo protect itself from the influx of illegals flowing over our borders?
And that was something I was discussing with some other folks. Like, as I mentioned, there's certain outside funding, especially from federal agencies that actually follow the law. Just as Governor Abbott, the other day, was speaking with DPS, especially where ICE and Border Patrol are having issues, there's certain other agencies that they have money where they can help local law enforcement help interdict those types of entities. Uh, law enforcement help interdict those types of entities. And I don't wanna give too much away, just in case someone else wants to try to steal the idea, but, well, they probably know anyways. But basically, they're able to, if, if this certain, uh, local agencies request or identify certain things. They will determine the need, et cetera, process it, and they can send their agents. To come and assist as needed, and if necessary, they can have a long-term, uh, presence. Which can help in multiple ways, uh, permanent decrease in drug activities. Which of course is always a problem, cause I've always seen people, uh, complaining about, uh, methamphetamine. Uh, the fentanyl issues, other narcotics, and general. Uh, cause this isn't a permanent stop, but as a passing through, cause we've had the same issue in my, uh, hometown. Um, because there's been an occasion where they've intercepted over, you know, one ton of marijuana. Or other narcotics on the way to Chicago, and, and I'm sure similar things happen here. So, it's the same idea, it's just, you, you just need to contact them and, but it has to be done. Through certain channels, and if, if the council's never done it, they never conceived of it, I mean, that's, again, shame on them.
So, your final thoughts or comments that you'd like to share?
Well, if people want better things, you, you gotta stop being complacent, cause I know there's. Every election, basically, there, it's, there's not enough, or there's not a whole lot of people that can get out there and vote. It's consistently sixteen percent of the population, and we almost keep getting the same. Type of people, and everybody keeps saying, why isn't this changing, why isn't this changing? You really gotta get out there and, you know, you gotta get the right candidates out there. And if you don't agree with them, you gotta go, get out there and tell them, no, this isn't who we want. So unless people get out there and tell them no, especially if you don't really tell the, the council members. Hey, you guys are not doing what you're supposed to, you gotta really be out there and vocal. You know, you can't just complain on Facebook, you can't complain on whatever social media, you gotta be in their face. You're not, not like physically in their face, but I'm not trying to instigate something, but you really gotta be vocal, I mean. If it's gotta be on city hall steps, you know, something legal and, uh, allowed. Yeah, to get out there and tell people, especially like this, this contamination thing, I mean, I don't think anybody's listening. Even though we keep telling them, but no one's doing anything, so.
So if somebody wants, uh, to get more information, where would they go to, do you have a website, Facebook? Phone number, what would you like for them to, how would you like for them to contact you?
I mean, Face- my Facebook page's fine, or, uh, my Gmail is fine, uh, so.
You wanna give it to them?
So you can just, uh, look up my name on Facebook, I'm sure people see my posts, uh, they're all over, so you can, just like on the marketplace. So it's just, you know, James Ervin, um, but my Gmail is, uh, oh golly, I'm forgetting it. Just give me one second here, sorry about that. Uh, J A M E R V eight six at gmail dot com.
You'll say it one more time.
Uh, J A M E R V eight six at gmail dot com, and that's where I'm having all my. Uh, campaign stuff going to, and, uh, I'm honestly doing this by myself too, so if. Anybody wants to help me bust some butt, um, and just whatever, yeah.
Get in touch with you, alright, well, I wish you all the best with your campaign, and, uh, thank you for your time this afternoon. It's greatly appreciated, thank you.
Very much, ma'am.